All right, I'd like to order the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, March 26, 2019, and we will start with roll call.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen.
Here.
Sina Sharp.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Robin Klein.
Here.
Don Francis.
Here.
First item this evening is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the asphalt plant at 1100 East Mineral Street, and we'll start with staff presentation.
Okay, this is the annual request for Iverson Construction to operate the asphalt plant in the rock quarry on Mineral Street. Generally, it's the same request as every year. They do have some slight changes in where they place the equipment within the rock quarry, but it's towards the western part of the rock quarry, not near the working base. The only issues that have come up over the years with this operation has been some dust complaints a few years back. In response to that, they did pave the entrance driveway, and then that in combination with some onsite spraying as needed to control the dust seems to have taken care of the issue. So, we've had no issues other than that. So, based on that, we would recommend approval. The Plan Commission also recommended approval with the following conditions: that the permit expire at the end of the asphalt-producing season. It's subject only for this particular property, and then the dust control is provided as needed. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? Is there an applicant statement? I don't know if the applicant is here this evening. We discuss this as a Plan Commission. This comes up every year, too, so... Public statements in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Public statements against? Or are public statements in general? Any council discussion? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, common council action, keeping in mind the three factors that were mentioned by our community plan and development director. So, is there a motion?
I move to approve the conditional use permit to allow the operation of the asphalt plant in the rock quarry at 1100 East Mineral Street, noting that the conditional use permit shall expire at the end of this asphalt-producing season. The permit shall apply only to the subject property, and the applicant shall provide dust control as needed along the driveway where it intersects with Mineral Street.
Second.
Motion and second, and we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And for those of you who are in the audience, I know some of you have already filled out our little green sheets of paper. If you would like to speak on something that's on our agenda, we ask that you fill this out. The papers are available on that back table. So, for the council's information, we have some people who would like to speak a couple of things on the consent calendar. The street closing, E2 for Park Place from Irving Street to Market Street. So, I would ask that the council, whoever makes the motion, takes that one out of the consent calendar, and then we can have a separate discussion and action on it. And then also, Council Killian has asked for a discussion and reappointment of City Attorney and Special Counsel. He has some questions. So, again, if you would make the motion removing those two, and then let me also read the following, and then we'll take the motion. So, the following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. The council minutes from our March 12 meeting are in the packet. Payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions, and I have three this evening to the Board of Review, Dwayne Borgan and Larry Ward. And then because I was not here at the last meeting, I am appointing Jim Wade, James Wages, to the Housing Authority Board with term expiring on 5/120. Also in the packet licenses for one-year and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol. Under permits, we have run walks, run as a one-run walk by Team Red, White, and Blue on Saturday, April 13 from 10:00 a.m. to noon. The Badger Camp 5K Run by Kiwanis Club of Platteville on Saturday, May 4 at 9:00 a.m. And the Nightingale 5K by Southwest Health on Sunday, May 5 at 3:00 p.m. And again, the street closing, I would ask that you would remove that for discussion and also F. So, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, A, B, C, D, E, 1, A, B, C. Removing E2 and F.
Second.
Motion and second, and we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we have a request for a street closing, Park Place from Irving Street to Market Street for the farmer's market on Saturdays from 7:30 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. May 4 through October 6. And we have some folks who have asked to speak and others who have registered in favor of the request, but the person that has asked to speak is Jenna Phillips. If you could come to the microphone, please, and give your name and your address.
Evening, folks. I'm Jenna Phillips. I am the Platteville Farmers Market Manager. My street address is 608 South Tyler Street, Lancaster, Wisconsin, 53813. On the issue of the street closure permit, I'd just like to address the common council on the street closure permit request that I submitted earlier this month. It was shown on the permit request that there is one business not in favor of the closure. And if the permit request is denied tonight, that could be a significant impact on the Platteville Farmers Market. So, I'll kind of go a little bit over that real quick. Impacts of the farmer's market. The previous market manager stated that the vendor sales when we moved to our alternate site, which is across the park, were losses of 40 percent. Some reporting, some vendors reporting more, mainly due to us not being in direct line of sight of the highway. The alternate locations were much less visible to the passing traffic, so we would have a higher potential of losing our impromptu guests and sales, which we do quit quite a bit, approximately 40 percent, that I've been able to track within the last year. Alternate locations currently would have less shade, which would have a significant effect on many of my vendors who sell items such as meat, eggs, dairy, baked goods, and canned goods. Many of these goods require by state law to be chilled at 41 degrees Fahrenheit or less, with that sun specifically in the July, August time when it's quite sunny and hot that will make it quite difficult for my vendors. So, we may not be in compliance with that state law. If we're unable to secure the location that we are asking for, it could possibly mean a loss in partnership with a fitness business that was just reached out to me in this last week, and also potential groups that might be seeking a partnership with the farmer's market to make it more of a community event for on Saturday mornings. There is an issue you guys saw in your packet in the email about littering and dog waste. We do have a farmer's market rule, which all of our vendors sign, and we are quite strict on that, where they must clean up their sales area prior to leaving. There's absolutely no dumping of refuse in the park receptacles or storm bins or anything like that. Prior to closure of the market, market staff and our vendors are highly encouraged to clean the streets that we are on, as well as the park and the business grounds. We have cleaned the community for State Bank parking lot, and we have also picked up items off the Martin Schwartz grounds since I have been there as a vendor, and I have heard from the last farmer's market managers and staff that this is also the case. And we pick up these items indiscriminately. It's trash, it's trash, we pick it up, because we don't want to be a bad neighbor. The Martin Schwartz property is located near the park, which is a major throughfare for pedestrians, in particular pedestrians between Second Street and to residents on the west side of Chestnut Street. I feel it might be a little unfair to blame the majority of the litter on Platteville Farmers Market, whereas he's located next to the park. It could be just folks utilizing the park or passing through as well. Same thing with the animal waste. A couple of instances of other farmer's markets having issues, something like this. The Cuba City Farm, Community Farmer's Market is currently moving their location from Veterans Park, which is two blocks off of the highway, to the Presidential Courtyard located on their highway, taking advantage of 6,000 cars that pass through that area. Their reasoning is that though it is very easy to walk those two blocks and driving distance is quite easy from that highway, they've seen a large decline in guest traffic despite significant signage and online presence. With the decline of traffic, they've also had a decline in vendors. Without having highway presence, they're having significant issues. Another case I'd like to point out is Lancaster Farmer's Market. Lancaster Farmer's Market in their first year was on the highway, very visible to guest traffic. They had great guest turnout. The average vendor attendance per market day was 18. With the move to the library grounds, which is one block off of the highway, the market lost the majority of their guest traffic, and their attendance down to average of four vendors, which is simply not sustainable. The previous curator at Martin Schwartz Funeral Home supported us and supported the street closure. They're often frequent shoppers at the farmer's market. They'd had great communication with the staff prior to market day and when they needed us to move to our alternate site, and they were quite happy to have us there. Matter of fact, majority of the perennials around Martin Schwartz buildings are from one of our vendors. Right now, the current curator from the outdoor farmer's market 2018, last year, market staff nor the Main Street program had received any communications that were needed for the needs of Martin Schwartz Funeral Home for the day in which we have made infected, affected their ability to serve their clients. There was one incidence where there was a "No Parking Funeral" sign on the north side of Martin Schwartz. Market staff nor Main Street program received any communications from Martin Schwartz that there was a scheduled event where the market would need to be moved. The curator, Mr. Pop, several hours after we started the market, expressed his displeasure to the market staff that the sign was ignored. He stated that he did not attempt to contact the market nor felt the sign, and felt the sign was enough. Market staff did give Mr. Pop that day information so that in the future, we could have good communications. We gave him email as well as a phone number to get ahold of us so that we could move for any client events. On that same day, a personal vehicle was seen driving out of the Martin Schwartz garage facing the park into guest foot traffic and up and over the west curb of Park Place and over one of the market's street closure cones. There was no communications that Mr. Pop needed to exit the garage that day. Just kind of some closing things here. The support and approval of the current location, it comes from Community First Bank, and also the spa boutique, a barber shop, also supports us as well as the church. Our past locations in the markets have always had great communications from folks that we did affect on those days, and where we were moved for weddings or pasty events, items such as that. Our current location, in the past, we had fantastic communication with the previous curator of Martin Schwartz, and we moved for all of their client events. I believe summer, this past summer, 2018, was the first breakdown of communication that we know of in the Platteville Farmer's Market history on the city park there. If we were to move the Platteville Farmer's Market, it will harm the ability for the market to be able to keep current guest traffic. This will ultimately harm our vendor sales. It could potentially harm the ability for the farmer's market to be an event where it contracts consumers to the downtown location from who may spend their money at downtown businesses, and also impact our ability to be sustainable. The market staff is willing to do anything to have community, open communication at any time of day or night to accommodate the needs of Martin Schwartz so that we can keep our current location that we're asking for. We just ask for open communication from Mr. Pop and Martin Schwartz Funeral Home and have another year at the proposed market day location so that we can give another try at coexisting in harmony.
Thank you. We also had Tom Osteen, who's liked to speak, or you also want to speak, Tom? And is registered in favor of the request.
I'm Tom Osteen. I live at 150 Moonlight Drive in Platteville, and I just wanted to reiterate two points that Jenna mentioned. I've been on the, at the farmer's market for 20 years. I'm probably one of the original ones in there. And so, I've been at all the different sites. We've had three sites for sure that we've had. And I really sympathize with the funeral director at Schwartz's Funeral Home. If he has litter and dog waste in his yard, I can sympathize. I wouldn't like that in my yard. The problem is, I don't think it's the farmer's market that's the culprit here. He lives next to the city park. The city park is used seven days a week. It's used year-round. There's birthday parties there. There's outdoor concerts there. People stroll around at the park, and students come back from Second Street through the park, and so the litter, I believe that the litter in that area is probably not the farmer's market. I know, I leave, I'm one of the last ones leaving at noon on Saturdays, and the last thing I do before I back my truck out is check every area I can see to see that I didn't leave anything. I'm also one of those that puts the cones down. And so, when I go pick up the cones at 12:00 at the other end, I'm looking, and I think the farmer's market vendors do a very good job in making sure things are clean when we leave. But then, we're there five hours in a week, and the park is there for the rest of the time for city residents. I think it's just been a possibly miscommunication with the new funeral home director. My second point is, we would like to work with every one of the business people. We'll go the extra mile to make sure that we are cooperating and we're getting along. We just have to have maybe better communication. I never heard of the complaints that the person at the funeral home registered. Anybody, if they walked down to our vendors, we would do everything we can. I understand there was one time when he couldn't pull out of his parking lot at the garage. Well, we could, we could easily take care of that issue. Anytime he needs to use the vehicle to get out on that Saturday morning, we would do everything we could to make sure that a spot was open for him. So, I just think a better communication would, would take care of this issue without us losing that spot, which Jenna pointed out was a very good spot for us for the reasons that she listed. And I would hate to see us have to leave and go to another spot. It would probably not be good for the farmer's market. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Teresa Straka, who is registering in favor of the location, also Andrea Waldera, David Hoffer, and Marcia Quartz. We do have someone who would like to speak against the request, Nathan Pop. If you would just, yeah, come up to the microphone, please, and give your name and address.
Hello, my name is Nathan Pop. I'm a funeral director at Martin Schwartz Funeral Home. My address is 130 Park Place, and my business is at 100 Park Place. And I am standing to speak out in opposition of the permit to close Park Place on Saturday mornings for a few reasons. One of least is litter. I understand that there's the park there. That's not a deal breaker. That's not a concern of mine. Litter comes with that part of the city. I pick it up just like everyone else. But the issue for us is the ability to be able to serve our clients on Saturdays. With the way things go, we are seeing more and more services on Saturdays as opposed to during the week, and we have several locations all through of Grant County. We may not have a service here at the location in Platteville on Saturday morning, but because I live there and so much of our equipment is there, we need to use that as a staging area to go out to the services, whether in there in Petosi, Bloomington, et cetera. The farmer's market being in the, in the Park Place area that does block our, both our driveway and the entrance to our business. We have had families that wanted to preneed or come in and make arrangements on a Saturday morning that we didn't have a service, and they did not want to deal with the traffic or they couldn't get, they couldn't park close enough, they didn't want to walk through the farmer's market to get to our entrance. So, that was a detriment to what we do. I am in support of the farmer's market, however, it's, it does inhibit my ability to best serve my, the family clients that I have. We have not, as stated, had communication with us. I have been the director at Martin Schwartz for the past three years, and at no time has anyone reached out to me to speak about the use of the street for this. I consulted with Greg Martin and Terry Schwartz, who are the owners of the funeral home, have been the owners since 2002, and they've all stated that at no time anyone communicated with us that there was a permit issue or anything. There was a previous director that was there. As I said, I've been there three years, but no one at the funeral home knows what relationship he had with the farmer's market. And as I said, since I've been there three years, I have been, first of all, I didn't know who to contact, and second of all, when I did have an issue, I just spoke to some vendors and they did direct me to Jenna. And so, we have talked, she's given me her contact information, and that was late in the season last year. Of course, during the winter, we didn't have a need to communicate. And with that, we had not had any communication. They hadn't asked us. We didn't know who to talk to, and as a result, when we had a service, I would need to stage or leave, use our vehicles, could not use the driveway on Park Place or our main entrance, so we would have to bring the funeral coach and back in our vehicles on the highway side, Chestnut Street, into our garage door from that side, load each vehicle, pull it out, pull in the next vehicle, et cetera. It made it much more difficult to do what we need to do. And so, that's just a problem for us. They have said that they, that I pulled the vehicle out on Park Place and went up the street when it was closed. I did not do that. I don't know where that came from. I certainly would not have driven on my own curb there or run over a cone. There have been cases where I need to get out on a Saturday morning when we have a person that's died and we need to go to a place of death. As the nature of our business, it's spontaneous. We can't plan in advance. Things like that just come up on a whim. And in those cases, we've had to move our vehicles to back from the Park Place side of the garage over to the Chestnut Street side, back out into the highway, and go on from there. So, having the farmer's market there does block what we can do on the Park Place side, and it's, as I said, I support the farmer's market, but it's a great inconvenience for what we need to do as a tax-paying business.
Thank you. Council discussion.
May we ask a question or two? My first question is, these events, this is a question for Nathan, these events, do they sometimes come mid-morning Saturday? In other words, you don't have an opportunity to plan before?
Nathan, I'm sorry, could I ask you to come back up to the microphone, please?
And to answer your question and to clarify a little bit, events, funeral services versus what we call a death call, when somebody passes away. Of course, with a funeral service, there's advanced planning to that, but when someone passes away, there's no warning. So, that can happen mid-morning without any planning. It can happen 4:00 a.m. before the market, and they would have to change things.
If it's a funeral event, you could get in contact with the farmer's market the night before even?
Yes. We would use, if there's an event that, that morning, we would know days in advance to contact someone.
And am I to understand you had no knowledge of who to contact in the past?
Correct.
And how you would have knowledge of who to contact?
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Mr. Pop? Thank you.
My feeling is that this has been identified as a communication problem, and it would be my feeling that this year, we should remain as it is and encourage better communication between. I mean, certainly, my experience with attending funerals is I know well in advance if there's a wake or a visitation or a service that I'm going to attend, and I believe there's an alternate plan for that. I think with a little additional communication, that there would be an opportunity for these folks to work out their issue, any issues. I understand that 8 to noon or whatever is a four-hour time period, and that, yes, there might be a death call in the middle of that, but I think that my experience with the vendors at the farmer's market is that these people are pretty compassionate, committed community citizens, and I don't think that they would be...
Cooperative.
Difficult or uncooperative. I can't even think of a word.
I don't want to forget his comment about needing to go to other cities on a fairly regular basis on a Saturday morning as well. And I assume that you've all looked at each of the sides of the park and made the decision for this preference, despite the other two sides giving you visuals still, but I guess I agree with, maybe, maybe it just needs to be talked out a little bit more. Maybe there just needs to be a more clear path that's easily moved so that if he needs to leave, you can escort him out, you know, letting vendors know that this is not ideal to set up this way because it's harder for him to get out.
And this is just a year permit, right? So, you can see how it goes, and then come back and do it again? Okay.
Any other comments?
I'd like to ask either Jenna or Tom to come back up to talk about the other possible locations. Who would be best to? So, it's been on Market Street before, and the alternative is to put it in front of City Hall on Bonson. Has Irving ever been discussed?
So, Irving is not an option because Community First Bank is now opening up their drive-thru on Saturday mornings because they closed the branch in Walmart. So, it would not work out for them, unfortunately, due to the one-way streets that go around the park. So, that is not an option on Irving.
So, if we were to go with the one that you have right now, how would a driver get to that drive-in bank?
So, their drive-in is through Main Street, and then, once they go through the drive-thru, they would, because of the one-ways, would have to take a right onto Irving and then be able to get out through behind Garby's and whatnot.
Then why not Market?
On Market Street, it's a one-way there with a lot of parking spaces, and the barber shop there expressed that they do not want us to take up the parking spaces there for other businesses, and we do agree with that. Since there's significant more parking spaces on that street, it would be a detriment not only to the farmer's market, but the surrounding businesses there on Saturday mornings. The other issue is that we're more likely to move because the church will have pasty... Um, the other issue is that we're more likely to move, um, because the church will have pasty, um, sales. And then a lot of Saturday mornings, you'll have uh, church events for weddings and whatnot. So we look, you'll have more closures on the alternate sites. But the main thing is the parking, we don't want to take up too much parking stalls around the city park there. This parking is a premium downtown, it seems to me.
And uh, Bonson's alternate, but the unattractive part of it is how much sunlight it...
Correct, so the amount of sunlight would be mainly all morning long on Bonson there. And um, state law requires that our beef, egg, poultry, um, cheese, butter vendors have their items chilled at forty-one degrees or less. And they must remain at that temperature no matter what. So if an inspector were to come in and inspect and they were a couple of degrees higher than that, they may not sell their product and they would not be able to sell it afterward after that. Um, it would be considered damaged. So that would be the issue right there with the amount of sunlight, even with the canopies, it gets very hot.
Have we ever tried it in the park itself?
We have not, uh, we do have several vendors as well as several many guests that do have difficulty getting around. Um, specifically folks that uh, take advantage of the Main Street program voucher program. Um, they have the ma- vast majority of of those guests have difficulty getting around. So having access to a paved area is easier for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding this? So the request is for the street closing. Main Street to Market Street for Farmer's Market on Saturday, seven thirty AM to one o'clock PM, May fourth through October twenty-sixth. I make a motion, we approve this street alley closing permit application form as presented for twenty nineteen from May fourth to October twenty-sixth.
Second?
Motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all for coming. Next is reappointment of city attorney and special counsel for prosecutorial services. Ken has some questions.
Yes, um, we have two city attorneys. And looking at the first page, uh, the information about the attorneys, it says that according to this Plateau Charter ordinance, the tenure of the city attorney is for two years, beginning on May one. And then, uh, when I go to the information, the contract for the first attorney, which is Cole, uh, we have changed that. And that it says under Article Three, term and termination, it says the contract shall commence on the first day of November twenty seventeen and shall continue until terminated by either party. So that sounds to me like this is a continual contract and that no two years is involved. That same page as under B, there are the forty-five days, which is uh, the subject of an amendment which is being proposed. Then turning to um, the uh, contract for wood, which is um, what is that, second, no, about the third to last page? It says under um, term, it says this agreement shall be for initial term commencing May one twenty eighteen and continuing to April thirtieth twenty twenty. So it does bring up the question, why are we um, putting forth the contract uh, uh, here for the two people? It seems like the first one is a continual contract. And the second one, it appears that the contract is good until April thirtieth twenty twenty. And we could be considering this next year. Um, so... And then my my last uh, comment is that um, I've heard complaints about one of the attorneys. And I'd like to um, present the individual or individuals to the city manager and have the city manager, city manager decide whether those complaints are legitimate or not. City manager is not here. Uh, we do have enough time to delay this until the next meeting so that she can make um, judgment as to what to do on this. So I think it's important that um, we consider complaints. Uh, we've just gone through um, the labor um, employee contract, employee handbook. And employees such as city attorney, city attorney are part of it. So my recommendation to the council tonight is to table this particular item so that the city manager can um, work on this and bring back information to us. So this is my motion, that this um, item be tabled and presented to the city manager.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that concludes the consent calendar. The next is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions if any. And we do have one person who would like to speak, and I know that one council member also has a an announcement. But Jack, if you'd like to come up first.
Uh, good evening, my name is Jack Ledke, I'm the executive director for the Plateau Main Street Program. And I am here just to uh, bring some good news to the council. The uh, Main Street Program, of course, is responsible for um, all the businesses and and the safety of our visitors to Main Street. And I wanted to compliment the council and the city for the installation of the traffic control uh, signals which are on Main Street. And if you haven't seen them yet, there's a nice electronic sign now up uh, indicating what your speed is going down Main Street. There's a flashing light around it, so it's pretty hard to miss. And uh, there's also some uh, cute sayings that the police have put on there to uh, welcome them. Uh, one individual said he was clocked at walking twelve miles an hour. And the sign thanked him for his speed control, I guess. But uh, in addition to that, I understand that there are going to be some uh, flag crossing uh, apparatus installed so that people crossing the street have a better chance of safety uh, in doing so. And so I wanted to compliment the council for addressing that. And uh, I think it's a real benefit for the Main Street Program. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Does our police chief have anything he'd like to add or does that pretty well cover it? That pretty well covers it, all right. Uh, Robin, you said you had something you would like to add?
On Jack's tailwinds, I guess I'm excited to say that um, we have a speaker coming to town and we're going to welcome him at Roundtree Gallery. I don't know if he's heard wind of that yet, but uh, on the eighth of April, we'll have Chesney Snow coming to town. He is a Platteville High School graduate, uh, who has since internationally traveled uh, with his performing arts. He has a documentary about him, American Beatboxer, recently been on Broadway with his skills. So we're going to have him April eighth, just a welcoming event that anyone who's interested in having the conversation of using the arts as a means for social change as well as a resource for finding healing and community um, connection. Seven thirty, we'll start with refreshments. And eight o'clock, we'll start a little performance and informal gathering conversation there. And then on Wednesday, the tenth, he'll speak in Lundin Lecture Hall um, on the American injustices and the functionality of art. Six o'clock, we'll play his documentary and he'll be there for question and answers after that. And then on the seventh, he will perform at Platteville High School for the community-wide event. And we'll have some local artists um, joining him for that.
On the seventh or eleventh?
Excuse me, the eleventh at seven o'clock, so thank you. Thursday, the eleventh, we'll wrap it all up at the high school at seven o'clock. And then on those days, Tuesday and Thursday, he'll be going into the schools and doing assemblies and workshops. Um, and Wednesday, we'll be going out to town to take him to the prison uh, in Baskerville. But I welcome you to contact me if you have any questions. Um, lots of opportunities to go see him, but I'd love for you to join conversations um, that we'll be having there, especially on Monday and Thursday night.
Didents?
They're absolutely free, thank you to Campus Climate for sponsoring him and bringing him to town. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other council members have any announcements they want to make? All right, we're going to go on to the reports in the packet, uh, Community Safe Routes Committee, Francis?
Actually, to just address what Jack was saying, yeah, the the Safe Routes Committee is uh, trying to address uh, traffic calming um, options uh, for Main Street. And I just checked with the chief ahead of time uh, of the meeting that that special radar machine uh, was kind of won through a lottery process. It's it's a machine that's over five thousand dollars, but they didn't have to pay five thousand dollars for that. So they scooped that up. And it's a real-time data uh, gathering machine, so that could, and and can be moved too. But we we put, he chose Main Street because of se- several issues with it already. Otherwise, we're also looking at, like you said, the uh, pedestrian flags that are used elsewhere in the city too.
Plan Commission, Dos?
I have nothing to add.
Library Board, Klein?
I just want to point out, April thirteenth, we have loud at the library. If you would like to get tickets, uh, you can head over to the library or check in with me and I'll help you get tickets for that as well.
Saturday night?
Thank you.
It's a set?
Yes, correct. Saturday night, April thirteenth.
Air Force Commission, Dos?
Nothing to add.
Historic Preservation, Commission, Killian?
No addition.
All right, we're on to our action items, Contract five nineteen, Camp Street Sidewalk, Howard.
Yes, thank you. This is one of the projects that was budgeted for in our two thousand nineteen uh, budget. This project completes a block and a half of sidewalk on Camp Street between Lancaster Street and the existing sidewalk about midway between Seventh and Elm Street. It was identified as a top priority connection in our original Safe Routes to Schools plan. When completed, this project would allow children to be able to walk on sidewalk between Westview and the middle school. Uh, the school district is partnering with the city and is funding five thousand towards this project. Uh, based on citizen input, the plan includes wrapping the sidewalk around the corner at Lancaster so that there will be a single crossing uh, north of that north leg of of Camp Street. And uh, the other ramp that was on the west side of Lancaster Street will be removed. Uh, the contract will require the contractor to do the work during the uh, summer break. But once started, it must be completed within three weeks. Uh, we had four bidders, low bidder being Lounger Brothers, a Platteville contractor with extensive sidewalk experience. Staff is recommending award to Lounger Brothers for the bid price of forty-six thousand six twenty-seven.
Questions, anyone?
I have a couple of questions. What's the width of the sidewalk?
Four-foot sidewalk.
Four feet? And then, as far as um, the sequence of material, how deep will the sidewalk go down as far as, where does the base start?
Six, was it? Okay. Okay, uh, four inches of gravel, four inches of sidewalk.
Only four inches of gravel underneath?
Unless it's going through a driveway and then then it'll be thicker.
You 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 take, you don't take into account anything as far as clay underneath? You don't check for anything like that because it could be a lot of different materials as you go down along the street.
When when we're talking about a a sidewalk, not through a driveway, there's not going to be heavy vehicles on that sidewalk, so it's not necessary...
Well, what I'm talking about is uh, the sidewalk going up and down. It could have one part rising up, another part staying the same or close to it.
We have, we have uh, we have rebar to uh, to allow the sidewalk to uh, stay together.
You put rebar in the whole link?
Yes.
Okay. And then my next question is, who observes the um, installation of sidewalk? Is that Delta Three?
Yes.
Okay. And then they inspect it? Also, on a sidewalk, um, we've had the experience of depression on sidewalks, water stands and and they can be very hazardous in the winter if snow falls on these depression areas. So that can be checked for also?
Just come up and tell them. That's fine, I can do it, but...
Dan has a bad, may have a, your memory may come back as far as the experience with that, go ahead.
Sure, um, yeah, the sidewalks are going to be graded with a two percent grade towards the street. Um, typically, they're going to be set um, about one to one and a half inches above the top of the curb, the top of the sidewalk will, so that the terrace area, which is approximately two feet, will drain towards the street. The sidewalk will be pitched um, at a two percent grade towards the street as well, which is standard. Um, we don't go any steeper than two percent, so people don't start slipping. Um, through the driveway sections, uh, like Howard said, it'll be six inches thick, so we don't have to worry about any of it cracking. And then that'll be um, pitched as well to minimize disturbance to people's driveways. Um, so it'll be pitching out as well, so there's no puddles or anything like that.
Okay, my concern is puddles.
Correct, so they'll be setting forms up. Um, it's a short, you know, they just use a short strike-off board. And then they they float it to make sure that it doesn't have puddles in it.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, is there a motion on the uh, award?
Yes. I move to award Contract fifteen nineteen, Camp Street Sidewalk to Lounger Brothers Construction for the price of forty-six thousand six hundred, twice M dollars.
Second? And a second, we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen? Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion.
All right, uh, next is the twenty eighteen fiscal year to twenty nineteen fiscal year budgeted carryovers. Nichols?
Thank you. So each year, um, at the at the end of the year, when we uh, look at the uh, financial performance of the city, uh, we identify certain um, funds that were designated for a special project or donations or grants, those types of things. Um, and departments request to carry those over. Uh, this year, we had quite a lot because of um, inclement weather in the fall of two thousand and eighteen, uh, meaning that some CIP projects were not able to be completed. In the attachment, you can see the list of the items that are being requested to be carried over. Uh, the total for the CIP fund is two hundred and four, forty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And uh, in the general fund, the total is twenty-one thousand and twenty-two dollars. Uh, if there's any questions about any of those items, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions, anyone? All right, is there a motion?
I move to uh, approve the carryover of two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five in CIP funds and twenty-one thousand, twenty-two dollars in general fund. In general fund expenditures per the attached schedule from the twenty eighteen budget to the twenty nineteen.
All right, we have a motion and a second?
What's a second?
We'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're on to information and discussion, Contract one nineteen, Lewis and Court Street Reconstruction.
Yes. This is another one of our uh, projects that were, was budgeted. It will reconstruct Lewis Street from Water Street to Court and Court from Lewis to Madison Street. Our original budget request was to uh, include the block uh, of Court Street from Madison to Jewett. Looking at our uh, budget estimate, we felt that we needed to cut that back to Madison Street. We knew that... We knew that there were some issues with that Madison to Jewett block. So staff directed Delta Three to include that as an alternate in case the bids came in under the budget. And it did, barely, but it did. We budgeted two point one, two million, including engineering costs. A little over a million in water and sewer, and just under one point one in city budgets. And so with the engineering and the construction contracts, we believe that we can do this contract with the alternates. And W.C. Stewart is the low bidder. They did some projects for us in 2016. So we'll be recommending the award with the alternates to W.C. Stewart for the bid price of a little over one point eight million dollars.
Questions, anyone?
I have a question. I just don't want it to be attached to this particular situation, bidder. But if you have any past experience that's been concerning when you make these recommendations, do you ever attach them to inform us? Or do you just not recommend them if you have made the conclusion that we don't want to work with that bidder anymore? How do we know?
Under the law, we are supposed to award to what is called the lowest responsible bidder. And so what we would have to do is we would have to basically show that whoever the low bidder is, is not a responsible bidder. And those things that you were bringing up, if they had serious issues with their contract performance in the past or financial issues or things like that, yes, that's something that staff would consider and bring to you if that were the case.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that's for information and discussion, and we'll have that for action next time. And the 2018 annual stormwater report update.
Yes. What we have is, last time, we had this on for information, and we had some questions about this. Basically, the issue here is that this is for informing the common council on this issue because there's a certification paragraph that says that we certify that the municipality's governing body, you folks, have reviewed or been apprised of the contents of this report. Councilmember Killian asked for additional information regarding the budget numbers. They did change slightly because of additional information from finance. But the idea here is that the column that says annual expenditure reporting year, that's, those are the actual numbers from our budget for 2018. The budget is what we budgeted for in 2018. And then budget upcoming year is the budget for 2019. And then we have the source of funds. What we're saying here is that, for example, construction site pollutant control, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars in 2018, those were the permit fees that we collected for erosion control. Likewise, post-construction stormwater management, the eleven fifty, is for our stormwater management permits. Pollution prevention, well, the next way to do this is four thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars under stormwater quality management is the general revenue amount that we spent for professional services, specifically for Delta Three to assist in the reports and other aspects of our MS four. And then the remaining money, just under thirty-eight thousand dollars, was what city staff spent for storm sewer maintenance activities. And so that's where all that came from.
My question is, where do you put things like leaf pickup? Grass pickup, clipping, brush controls? Where do you put those? Is that on an ITA, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-seven thousand?
Some of it is, but most of it is in our recycling budget. So, yeah.
We don't take action on this report?
No. This is to make sure that you're aware of it before we send it out by the end of the month.
Any questions, Ken?
Yes.
Can you do the page number, please? I think it's the top of the page.
Top of the page, page six, page six of eleven. This, I assume the form came from, was given to you, correct?
Yes. This is a fillable form by the DNR, and we fill it in. Delta Three assists us in doing that, and we coordinate that work.
Okay, on page six, item nine, it says, excuse me, how many of the following enforcement mechanisms did the municipality use? So you've checked verbal warning, written warning, notice of violation, civil penalty. And you put zero by all those, so none of those were used. You checked them, but they didn't, they weren't used.
Yes. The intent here is that this is in Section Three, illicit discharge detection and elimination, subsection G, correct, up near the top of the page. And so what it says is we're checking the box that says that we, as the city of Platteville, have legal authority to do any or all of these items, from verbal warnings to civil penalties or citations. What it's saying is that we did not have any reported and confirmed illicit discharges during last year. What we mean by that are reports of oil in the storm sewer system, or paint, or anything like that. Those are not supposed to go in the storm sewer system. So what's supposed to happen is if people see that, they're supposed to call us, we investigate. And if we can track down who's doing that, then we can enforce the ordinance by any of these methods.
When I go down to four, construction site pollutant control, E, verbal warning is down there. So you had fourteen there.
Yes. That's Mr. Rinnecker as part of the building inspection process. He said that he gave out fourteen verbal warnings.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? All right. That concludes, I guess, the televised portion of our meeting. We're going into a work session to talk about wastewater treatment plant phosphorus update.